I'd like to welcome you guys. And I would love for you to introduce yourselves and tell us, especially our youngsters in the back, why you're here. Just give us your name and tell us one sentence why you're here.
Hi, I'm Connor. I'm with the Boy Scouts. I'm here to... Well, it's for a merit badge working on communication. We're here, we have to come to the board. We see how this is going to happen this month.
Thank you. And Connor, what town are you from?
East Montpelier.
I'm Daniel, and I'm here for the same reason.
And what town are you from?
East Montpelier.
I'm Arthur. I'm here for the same reason, and I'm from East Montpelier.
I'm Donovan. I'm here for the same reason I'm from East Montpelier.
And are all you guys at U32?
Yes.
Yeah? Well, welcome. We're really glad to have you here. And I hope you can get the part of your badge that you need through this meeting.
We'll try to keep you awake.
And are you guys chaperoning them?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay.
I'm parent to two of them.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming. It's nice to have you. Agenda revisions?
Yes. We have one. You eat, I'll talk. The qualifications process for pre-qualifying construction folks have gone faster than we thought. So we have five firms for you to approve. Instead of January, we can do it now, and it can actually speed up the process to get to the end.
So that would be an action agenda?
Yeah, we had set the date for yesterday, but we were not sure we would be able to follow through on all of the reference checks and all that. But we were good for the companies that submitted. We didn't have too big of a list.
Okay. So we'll add that to the action agenda.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna hold off on public comments, because I want to do this community forum, and then we can go back to that. So Kari and Scott have put together a presentation of the budget.
Great. Let's see, Kari.
I'm gonna move, because I am in the way.
All right, well, hey, thanks, everybody, for coming. I appreciate you taking the time on a dark December night. And we're gonna just go through, Scott and I, some of the background, and then we'll present some of the detail, but at a fairly high level, about this year's draft budget. We're working on version three right now. And then we'll be talking forward. Okay? So take the next slide, please.
Yep.
So yeah, so this is our agenda, and we will go through the process, a little bit about our mission and performance, and then talk about some trends. Okay? Let's keep rolling. All right. First thing I want to start with is this is a different kind of year because of the Act 46 and the State Board's decision to make our union become a unified union district, a single entity. So I wanted to lay out a little bit of the timeline here, so just for your information to kind of put this in context. Some of this is fluid, so don't hold me to these dates, but we're working with the best information we have right now. January 9th, we're planning to have a public hearing of the draft Articles of Association, which would be the bylaws for the new union. So I invite you to come to that. There'll be more information about where and when, but January 9th is that. Then we will be having the first organizational meeting on January 14th. That'll be in the evening in the auditorium here, correct? That's where we start establishing the rules for how the new union will operate, and that would be followed by the first meeting of the Transition Board. So there's some different layers that are going on here, but each of the schools is going to appoint a couple people to this Transition Board to sort of navigate as we go forward. Then on January 28th, that's the anticipated due date for candidates for the next round of school board elections. It's a little confusing. We're gonna be electing this new unified board for folks who want to serve on that, anticipating two from each town, two members from each town. But we will also be electing where we need to, folks, to populate the current six different boards that we have as part of our supervisory union, so that these boards can continue their work and finish out the school year and the audit after that. Then on February 19th, we're anticipating that we'll vote on the Articles of Association as a unified district. The all five towns will vote to adopt bylaws. And then on March 5th, Town Meeting Day, we'll be electing the school boards. And then we're anticipating that on April 30th, we'll actually be voting on a budget, of which the U32 budget will be a component, right? So we're, instead of voting on six different budgets, the idea is that it will be have one single merged budget. Okay? Next slide, please. And so this slide shows sort of the process that we're using to develop the U32 budget. We start with input from the staff, goes through various scenarios, with feedback from the school board, and it goes around as many times as necessary. As I mentioned, we're on stage on step three, or version three, and now we're taking some community comments we could revise, I'm not sure how many more times. But what's different is that the U32 board is not going to be recommending this budget to the electorate to pass on Town Meeting Day, as we traditionally would do. We're gonna be passing along our work to the new board, okay, that's elected on Town Meeting Day. And it'll be up to them to recommend whatever they want. We think that they'll benefit from the work that we're doing now. And then ultimately, as always, the voters will approve or not. Okay? Any questions about Act 46 and this whole timeline and process? Big picture. Mike?
I don't know if this is the right time or not, about the process?
Well, yeah, I think it is, because we're gonna move into other things.
I'll try to be brief.
Thank you. I'm just concerned with the information that's been put out unofficially on Front Porch Forum about two things. And one came from Bill, and one came from Kari, that the Transition Board is going to, or the initial board is going to have a date by which people are gonna be elected on Town Meeting Day. And under the article, and I just don't know when that was, decision was made, and by whom, because that decision doesn't get made until the Transition Board is sworn in and gets their authority. So it might be a good idea, it might be a perfect idea to have that election on Town Meeting Day. But who made that decision, and when? Because there's no authority right now for that decision to be made. That's the first question. The second question that I have, and I'd like an answer to that question, if I could kindly, please. The second question is, is the petitions having to be due on January 28th. Now, that was put out, that these petitions will be due on January 28th. But if the electorate decides at the organizational meeting to elect the new members to the new board, the initial members on the new board, not by Australian ballot, by on the floor, there will be no petitions due for the new school board. The nomination and voting on those new members will take place at a meeting without petition. So I'm just concerned, and this is the concern that me and a number of people have had, that these decisions are being made outside of the governance structure. That there's no authority, with all due respect, to be setting those timelines until the Transition Board meets. And again, it might be a terrific idea to have the election, even if it's not by Australian ballot, on Town Meeting Day, but there's no authority for anyone right now to make that decision. So I'd like to know who made that decision, and when it was made.
I'll try to respond.
And I'm not trying to be a crankabout.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, because I think you're right. I think that I'm overstating it in that this is really the anticipated timeline, and it really will be up to the Transition Board to establish, well, yes, as you point out, we're gonna have to decide how decisions get made in our new union, but also then what is the timeline. I think that the group of people that's been working on this sees how tight things are to, you know, move through these various steps, and has identified these as the most likely dates, but they're not sentenced to them. I think you're right. Is that accurate, Bill?
Yeah, it's very accurate. I mean, I know I've put it out there, you're right, Michael, I have. And, you know, I'm trying to put out draft timelines right now. Maybe I should put more draft, draft, draft on it than I do put on it, but it's, you know, it's understanding the tightness of all this, and how tight the Transition Board has for turning things around.
So that's a really good point. I think that we'll sort of reframe this as we talk about it publicly.
Because I overread these things as, and we'll see what a court has to say about whether they're even valid. But right now, they are valid, they're presumptively valid, but it sounds like it's fait accompli.
So I agree with you. The other thing that I learned on Monday, that the draft articles that we have that are handed to us by, until those are changed, those are the ones I follow.
Absolutely. And when one reads those, it has to be decided by the electorate whether or not there's gonna be petitions or Australian ballot. And people may decide, let's go with Australian ballot, and that's fine. And the initial board may decide, or Transitional Board, excuse me, let's go with Town Meeting. Might be a great decision, but we gotta have some kind of governance authority. And again, without overstating it, when you, in Front Porch Forum, it's not a legal posting, but it says, this will take place. This will take place. Maybe it will, maybe it won't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to...
Okay. Any other questions about the process, and we're gonna get into other topics? All right. Next slide, please. So we're gonna talk a little bit about, you know, whether we are a supervisory union or a unified district. We have a mission, and the mission currently is that we exist to nurture and inspire in all students the passion, creativity, and power to contribute to their local and global communities, okay? And then there's a follow-up to this that gets into more specifics on the next slide, talks about, we want students to have core knowledge of essential academic subjects like literacy and math. We also want students to be proficient in things, traceable skills like problem solving and communication. So we're trying to do a lot here, and really, the budget, the point here is, the budget is just a tool, like a lot of different things, to try to accomplish this mission. It's all in service of this. So next step, how are we doing in terms of accomplishment of this mission? Well, we've been starting to get reports and data that's more specific about that, so I'm just gonna share with you a little bit. So this slide shows the level of proficiency, and this is across the supervisory union, so includes the elementary schools as well, and we're talking about proficiency in literacy specifically. We've got three different ways of assessing. One is report card data, so very internal to us. One is a local assessment that's done using an objective analysis. And then the third one is the SBACS, which is an external test, all right? So using those three different types of assessment, we see that we're somewhere between 55% of students proficient and 70%, somewhere in the range of 60, 62%, something like that. Not where we want it, but that's what it is in terms of literacy as of last, end of the last school year. Next slide, please. This shows the same analysis for math, and here it's a little bit different. We've got, report card data is up close to 58%, but the local assessment and the SBACS, the proficiency rate is more like 40%. So in our discussions that we've had, and again, this is across the SU, this is not where we want things to be. We need to see improvement, and we're just not satisfied with this. Next slide, please. This slide, I just wanted to give you a little bit of insight into some of the challenge that the SU faces. What this does is breaks out the SBACS, that's an external testing for math in the sixth grade, and it shows on the left, students, on the far left, students that are on free and reduced lunch, and their average score is the yellow line across, and then students that are not on the free and reduced lunch. And the difference there is, if I remember correctly, about a year's worth of learning in math in the sixth grade, okay? On the right-hand side, we've got students that have an individualized education plan, and those that don't have an individualized education. And here, if I remember correctly, the difference is more like two and a half years of learning. So significant differences in these populations, subpopulations. And this is part of the challenge for the SU, and it's a big challenge for U32 specifically, because these are sixth graders, they're coming in, and it's not necessarily a level playing field, so to speak. Okay? Just want to share that. And then we do have a plan, we're midway through a five-year strategic plan. It lays out just the headlines here, three key objectives, we're establishing clear learning targets, what is it we actually want students to learn, then having good assessment systems, and of course, high-quality instruction, and then interventions where students need additional help. And the next slide is, oh, and I just wanted to share, we have a very specific learning goal. This speaks to math, and just to give you the highlight for U32, at the beginning, and this goal was established by the staff, by math teachers. At the beginning of the year, in September, we had roughly 46% of students proficient at their grade level. We want to end the year at 74%. So we feel that's a fairly ambitious goal. We want to be moving the bar up quite a bit, and really accelerating that amount of learning. It's not 100%. It's not where we necessarily want it to be long-term, but we're working towards that. So I think that's the last slide that I have, and I'm gonna turn it over to Scott to talk about some of the big picture.
Yes, this is just an introude, and ordinarily, I would ad lib, but I could talk about this stuff forever, which would, I think, Kari...
Well, I enjoy that.
That's very kind. So I'm disciplining myself by actually trying to stick to a script. So anyway, I think many of us who have been around for a while would agree that we live in strange and discordant times, where on one hand, we have a strong sense of the harshness and difficulty of everyday life, but on the other hand, we have an equally strong and even mythic sense of optimism about the future, as you can sort of see that contrast here. And on stage 16, I don't know if any of you gentlemen are doing stage 16?
I'm helping out on tech.
You're helping out on tech?
Yes.
Yeah? So it's Annie, right?
Yes.
So have you heard the song, "The sun will come out tomorrow"?
Yes.
Yeah? So that is, I'm sure you've heard it probably...
Hundreds of times.
Yeah, hundreds of times. So anyway, that is so classically a part of our thinking. And for the next one, Bill, please. But for all too many people, the sun won't come out tomorrow. In fact, won't come out ever. Life expectancy nationwide is down last year, with way too much of that decrease due to suicides. The expression, deaths of despair, came up in this middle, first entered the lexicon in this middle piece, the famous paper by Anne Case and Angus Deaton from 2015. This, at the time, struck like a thunderbolt, and the expression, deaths of despair, has been with us ever since. Next, please. You can get a sense of just how widespread this epidemic of despair is, and how generally it has worsened in 11 years, from 2005 to 2016. So it's almost as though we dodged an economic depression in 2008, only to fall victim to a social and emotional great depression. Next, please. So while more people in their prime adult years are suffering untimely deaths, at the same time, and especially in Vermont, fewer children are getting brought into the world. We've, Vermont has actually been at or near the bottom of these rankings for the better part of an entire generation. And can anybody guess, within Vermont, the state with the lowest fertility rate in the country in 2016, what county do you think had the lowest fertility rate?
Washington.
Washington?
Washington, believe it or not, yeah. Washington. So this may be what the class of 20, graduating class of 2034 looks like. Let's hope not. Next, please. So on this, this is from the Case Deaton paper, and I just want to pause for a moment on this, because it's a kind of counterpart to what Kari was showing you on the achievement gap in math between different populations in the school. This is what I hope is the closest thing to a scream for help that I ever see on a statistical table. Basically, what's happening is that white, non-Hispanic males with a high school education or less, born between 1959 and 1968, have been dying at heavier, very heavy rates compared to their older cohort, born between 1945 and 1954. And much of this is happening through various forms of self-destruction. If you look from cirrhosis, alcoholism, car wrecks, intentional self-harm, which is basically suicides, all of these are positive. Poisonings, that's mainly drug overdoses. And external causes, basically stuff that happens to you from the outside, not from getting sick. And where in most other categories, including a huge improvement in black, non-Hispanics and Hispanics, the one absolute anomaly here is that is the circle area. And later work has also reinforced that most of this is happening, most of these excess deaths are happening in rural areas. So these are our people who are really hurting. Our predecessors who oversee high schools back between 1973 and 1986 were worried about the achievement, their own version of the achievement gap at the time, but perhaps they, well, how could they have known? But they ought to have been worried about the survival gap between these different cohorts 30 years on. So our high schools then apparently failed to equip these students with the intellectual and emotional resources to adapt and stay alive. So maybe we should also, amongst everything else, be asking ourselves, how are we doing at equipping our students with these skills, with these resources? So, next, please. This may actually seem like sort of a duh kind of statement, that many of the same factors that are driving too many people to early graves are also keeping them from having as many children as they might wish to. And then that those children who do get born are, have to grow up, facing into the same stiff, adverse headwinds. So really, it's no wonder that special education costs are the fastest-growing component of our education expenses. And this is something that I unfortunately expect is going to continue. Next, please. This slide is just to frame our request, and what is happening in Vermont, these are trends indexed to the year 2006, which is the first year where we can really get consistent apples-to-apples comparisons on state education property tax. You can see that even though it's more volatile, because it's smaller, it essentially tracks total Vermont wages and salaries as a share of Vermont, the Vermont economy. But you can see that the Vermont wages and salaries are stagnating. Meanwhile, I mean, this may not be a surprise, based on what I was just talking about, but personal spending on healthcare in Vermont as a share of the Vermont economy has gone up substantially. If it's plateauing, that's a good thing, we don't know. And next slide, please. Now, this one is an even bigger-picture slide, indexed to 1954. The red line is like the red line on the previous slide, total wages and salaries for the US as a whole. The blue line is corporate profits for the US as a whole. Again, these are adjusted for inflation. What you generally see up until around the year 2000 is that corporate profits and wages and salaries are generally, you know, more or less together. You can't see the recessions, the recession parts on this chart, but their corporate profits tend to be more volatile anyway. But where you see after 2000, they get really volatile, and there's a big jump right before the big plunge in the recession after 2008. But since then, they have just come completely decoupled from the wages and salaries, which, based on what we saw before, I think may not be a great sign of that we might not be facing serious economic ups and, well, serious economic downs since at the moment where we've been for years on an up. So however, because the sun always does come out tomorrow, Kari will bring us back to a choice.
No. I have to put the happy ending on this story? So the one thing I would say about, I was hoping for a happy ending, but I think that we view, and a lot of people in the community view, the schools as a big part of the solution to these challenges. So bringing it back to our particular scenario on the next slide, please. This is the long-term enrollment trend at the U32. Couple different ways of calculating it, the average daily membership, and then the actual total enrollment. They're calculated, there's actually a third way of calculating enrollment, but the point is that it's trending down, and I think it's roughly about a percent a year. And we have evidence to suggest that that might accelerate, it might be trending. And of course, it just makes it more and more challenging to offer the programs that we currently do in this type of environment. All right. We're gonna move into how does the budget fit into the tax rate? Many of you have probably seen this before, but our school expense budget is just one component. We have the state education fund, so what the legislature actually ends up doing to support us is, we won't actually know until the spring. We have equalized people, people count, I was referring to the other method of calculating how many students we actually have in the school. The school expense budgets, this school, the five others, will be a component of that final budget. And then there's the common level of appraisal, which is the way of assessing tax rates, or appraisal rates in different towns, property values. And then this slide shows, basically, on the left is expenses, just a pie chart breakdown of different expense categories. On the right is revenues. You can see education spending revenue is the vast majority of that. And on the left, you can't see all the different components, but roughly, what, 70% or so is personnel cost?
70 to 75% is personnel. And one of the things, Kari, I forgot to just remind you of, when you see the WCSU assessment so large, there's special education within that, because that had to move to the supervisory union.
Right, right.
So special education looks really small down that second orange piece, but there's a local component that's within the school, and then there's the component that has to flow through the supervisory union.
Did we have a handout? Did that get out?
It's on the table. I think I handed it out.
Okay. So if anybody needs handouts, especially the part we're gonna go over next. But just to give you a sense of the breakdown, and then the next slide is gonna really summarize the headlines from draft budget number three. So we usually do comparisons of last year's budget. The biggest component always is compensation for our staff, that's teachers and support staff and administrators. Just based on where we are now, and most of that's pre-negotiated in labor contracts, we're looking at an increase over last year of 2.2%. We're gonna make, we're planning on making some adjustment for that by staffing changes, not on the teacher level, but in terms of support staff, that will bring that down somewhat. And then we have some non-salary adjustments that will increase the budget over last year. One of them, as I recall... One of them, as I recall, was a pretty significant increase in the tuition for students that go over to the tech center in Barry. And there was another one, the special education assessments for the SCU was the other big one.
Those are the big ones.
When we have reductions, well, we have reductions in revenue to offset, but the bottom line is bringing us to about 3%.
That, even though it shows as a negative there, Kari, that's actually an increase in revenues.
Oh, okay.
Decreases the impact on the tax rate, that's why it's a negative there.
Okay, yes. All right, so that's, so then, so total all this up, and we're at a projected impact, net tax impact of just under 3%, which was the target, the direction that the U32 board gave to the administrators. So right now, we are working with a budget that satisfied our original ask. And so from this, we're going to move into the discussion part. And the questions I have for you are, what questions do you have for us? What's your reaction to the information that we've given you? And specifically, love to hear from you, if you have an opinion at this stage. Are we doing a good job of properly balancing the impacts on the students, the schools, and the taxpayers? It's really the balancing act that we're trying to achieve here. And we'll open it up.
Kari, do you mind if I just turn it off? I think you want to leave it on.
The 3% impact on the tax rate, what does that take into consideration? For example, does it consider increases in the grant list, or is it based on a previous grant list?
No, this is just on the school budget.
Yeah, that's the increase to the school budget, that 2.98%. How it impacts taxes is a completely different calculation.
Wasn't that presented, though, as a tax impact?
Yes, we did, and on tax impacts, like the students last year's CLA, 2017, we don't get this year's CLA until December 31st.
Any predictions on how the CLA may change?
I think it will probably go down in most towns because property values have been going up.
And what impact will that have?
That will increase the impact.
More than 3%. Okay, that was one question, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Just about equalized pupils, are there, this is, is there any prediction?
So these aren't official numbers of equalized pupils. As we told you last time, we're still estimating, the ABC of Education is behind on their statutory requirements to get us actual figures, so they're the best that we can estimate at this point. We know we're losing equalized pupils across the system and within U32. Our number of pupils is going down, and some places is very drastic.
It just occurred to me, though, would you like to explain to the pupil?
Do you want me to go into an hour?
No.
Piece of, no, equalized pupils is a way of taking all the pupils, and let's say there's 75,000 pupils in the state of Vermont. There's weighting factors based on poverty, based on if you're a high school student, elementary student, English language learner, student that needs special education services, and there's factors given to you, given to that individual student. That's all totaled up, and the idea is that at the end, they want the number of equalized pupils to equal the actual number of enrolled pupils. So there's different factors and percentages put on those different weights, as it were. That's probably my shortest equalized pupils I've ever done.
That's great, yeah.
But it's factors based on student needs.
But it's also correlated with the population, the student population, and it's trending down.
Yeah, and we're trending down, we're trending down around state, Washington Central is going down faster than the state right now, and we have been for several years.
Any, Michael?
I want, it's a little attenuated. It has to do with Washington Central Supervisory Union budget, which is part of the U32 budget, and then it's embedded in it, and this is from the last meeting. There's a salary increase and staffing change of $110,867 for the Supervisory Union budget. Can anyone explain what that is? Because in parentheses, it says, "No new positions," but it's $110,000.
I don't, I don't have that, I don't believe. Is that, are you looking at last week, last?
I'm looking at January, excuse me, December 5th, 2018, full board meeting budget with Supervisory Union.
The budget that was approved by the full board?
Yeah, and which is, I know it's embedded, it's embedded within, there was no opportunity at that meeting for a question that I was aware of, but it's embedded in this budget. I'm just wondering if anyone here, maybe someone on the executive committee will, or someone can articulate what that is.
Can I see it?
Sure.
I don't have my materials with me, so I'm doing it from memory. So I'm not going to say I'm going to be accurate.
You got to go ahead.
Yeah, thanks.
It's out, it's out on, it's out on your circle.
Without these.
Yeah.
Okay, so what that is, is that, so we, Central Office, this budget for Washington Central includes all the special educators, all the SLPs, all the associated services with special education. So we're not just the thirteen people. There's about sixty to seventy-five personnel that are now in the Washington Central budget. So that's the annual increase for that number of personnel. So that, I mean, that's assuming, we're assuming some things because we're in a negotiation year for next year.
And generally, increases for this staff, well, some of it is negotiated, right? Some of it's not.
Some is at the end, some. Right now, we're at the point, because we're in a negotiation year for next year, we took assumptions, basis we always do when I talk with the negotiation committee, we try to keep that somewhat quiet, because we're trying to, we're in negotiations. But we know with the healthcare increase, right now, healthcare is increasing almost 12% across the board for all personnel. And then, so that, that we know in there.
And that's in that line also?
That's in that, no, that's in a different line. He has, he has a healthcare and benefits change, right?
It's down below.
Below it. So it's actually, that 12% is actually a 3% increase for all our, on all our HR costs. I mean, about 30% of a physician, for a teacher, is benefits. For a para educator, it's about 50% of their total cost.
I think just as a comparison, our budget has a $242,000 increase for that same line.
So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. Yeah, but that, and it's just, it was a parentheses to say that, you know, we're not adding staff. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments before we wrap it up here? I have a couple more slides just to remind ourselves of the next steps. And again, this is, some of these dates are draft, and I don't want to make assumptions about what's actually going to happen, but this is what we're anticipating is a likely scenario. The school boards are going to recommend budgets, we're following this process, it'll be up to the next board to do as it chooses. We are anticipating a public hearing on January 9th to look at the new Articles of Association, the draft ones. And then on the 14th, we have a first organizational meeting and transition board meeting. And then in, depending on how that goes, well, the transition board will be rolling up these various budgets into one. February 19th, we're anticipating a vote on the Articles of Association. March 5th is town meeting day, we'll elect the school boards. And if things go according to this program, then we would end up with a vote somewhere around April 30th on the entire budget. And then sometime in the spring, after all of that's happened, as normally, the normal order of events, the legislature weighs in, they have the final say, and actually determine the amount of money that schools get. And then the last slide is just, if you have additional questions, feel free to contact any of us, we'll do our best to answer. And if you have any comments that you'd like us to take in. Yes, please.
You know, I just, I'm a little confused about what the middle slides had to do with the budget. You know, one of the things I see a lot is the number of students leaving the state after they graduate high school, and then they don't come back into the state, and that wasn't mentioned. I didn't really see a connection of the mortality rate and what you guys are doing budget-wise to, I just didn't, that just seemed sort of not connected with the budget in any way. So I'm not sure where you're going with that. I know if I was sitting in town meeting and you guys came up with that, I would sort of wonder where your minds are really going with that.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I agree. Just because, it's my fault. That was, Kari is humoring me, and this is, this is sort of...
Don't humor you too long, because that might turn on motors. I just, yeah, it's just very disconnect right there.
Yeah, I think it was, the disconnect is more, it's, I think...
Scott, can you connect it for her?
Yeah.
Would that help?
Well, yeah, I mean, like, I thought, I thought that was going to go somewhere where you guys were going to be offering programs that directly tied in with a budget, like, you know, we're offering programs for students for hopefully not having babies very soon, but maybe staying in Vermont and having your babies, you know? But I just didn't, yeah, I just...
Yeah. At this point, what we're, it's essentially just trying to make sure that when we talk about the budget, we're not talking about it in isolation from the real world that people live in. And the, what is happening, I mean, a lot of that was sort of background to explaining why it is that special education expenses are naturally growing disproportionately fast compared to other, other kinds of educational spending. And underscoring the importance of that, the seriousness of the situation that's out there in the world, among, you know, our people who are sending their children to school, so that, you know, we're just aware of this and building that awareness into the dry numbers that get compiled into what we actually wind up doing as an organization next year. That, but I hear you loud and clear, as I know...
If you had started with that, if you had went into, this is what I'm, this is what we're looking at, this is the reason why special education is going up, I think that you, I think there's more expounding on that, like building on curricular activities which help for, with mental health and all of that, you know, humanities is also a big thing. I just, yeah, I was just a little disconnected. But if you had started with that and said this is, yeah, I can get that.
Well, I, you're right, and I think what I look, well, I don't know, who knows what's going to happen next year at this time? But if by some chance, if by some, from my perspective, happy chance, I'm, Kari and I are, you know, in a position to be doing this again, I would enjoy very much, you know, sort of doing something more...
Yeah, no, I appreciate the feedback, we can do better with that. If I were going to summarize it, I would say, the challenges that society faces are immense. The school is in an environment where we're trying to preserve programs, and yet, we're also trying to raise the bar in terms of student learning and proficiency, because it's so important to address those immense challenges in society. And so while we would love to do more with the budget, we feel like we are doing what we can to wring out as much learning from the dollars as we can.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
We want to finish the budget discussion, then?
Yeah, right. You're the chair.
You guys want to just finish the budget discussion while we're right here?
Let's not forget the minutes, though.
No, I'll go, oh, let's do those first, thank you. So motion to approve the minutes of December 5th.
So moved.
Scott, in a second?
Okay.
George, any comments or changes?
I have one. So item 3.1 on the second page, says, "Kari Bradley asked whether the proposed cuts in the budget draft have negative impact on students," and that's a little bit broad to student learning outcomes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Composed, that motion carries. We've done that, I'm going to start checking these things off here, so we do this. So let's look at the budget. And do people have questions for Stephen and Bill? Or are you comfortable with draft three? Or do you want more information? If you guys want to say anything about draft three as opposed to draft two?
So I can give good news, is that how we got to that number, which was the Career Center actually reduced their tuition a little bit. So that saved us around $16,000, yeah. But we also went through, with a very fine-tooth comb, through our, through some of the insurance to see, had we coded people correctly? Were there people that could be on a different plan and save them money, which in turn would save us money? And so we were able to find some savings through that as well, and just make sure that people, you know, if nothing else, it gave us a chance to, we really just went through person by person and said, are we sure that they're paying into the right program? Because, for example, we found one person who was on the family plan, but it was a parent with two children, and that's actually a different, lower-cost plan, which saved them money, saves us money as well. But so, but we were able to talk to them and say, hey, guess what? And nobody seems to be bothered by that, which is good. So there were things like that that we were able to find, which helped us really come back into line with this, to get it to where it was. So really, these were more technical issues than anything else, but it's pretty much the same scenario from draft two to draft three, with just some changes within those small areas. But it got it under three.
You did.
Which was, I heard very clearly, 2.98.
He went even further.
That's good.
And I just have one question, I was looking, I hope I didn't ask it last time. Under other staffing changes, academic program changes.
Yes.
What is that?
So that primarily falls within the line that special education programs.
Oh, okay.
And remember, our special education expenses are both in our budget and in our assessments to the supervisory union, and those are listed as such. So...
But that's not personnel?
Yes, it is.
In addition to, two lines up above, is also personnel, right?
Yep.
Those are ones that weren't seen in this year's budget. Can we do a budget-to-budget comparison?
Okay, and then this bottom one...
I see what you're asking, yes.
And then the bottom line are additional cuts that you're going to make this year, that we talked about. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thanks. Any other questions?
That is good.
I think, given our role in this budgeting process, this is...
Yep, and so, I'm just looking at our motions here. Do we even need to...
You don't need a motion, it's going on to the transition board.
Okay, so we don't have to say anything?
Although, just because this whole thing just has me kind of sunk into confusion. What if, what if the lawsuit puts a stop to things? Do we revisit this?
You will, but we are at the point, we're already past the point where we cannot have a vote, if there were an injunction even tomorrow, that we could be ready for a town meeting vote on the 5th of March. We'd have to have a special election for your budget. We have already changed at Central Office, so we cannot, we're not on the timeline for a town meeting budget vote at this point. I've been telling it to all boards. I said, and we'll end up having a special meeting.
Regardless.
A special vote.
Regardless which way the government system is, we're that, once we go off our track and we're that tight.
Is that because of the work you have to do, or because of the warnings?
Yeah, it's because of the warnings and the work we have to do. Basically, January 10th, we have to have everything ready to go into town reports, town reports. I think we have a later section of this, yes, 3-4 and 3-5, we'll be talking about that in Act 46, about how reporting will be changing this year right away for communities.
So is there an estimated point at which...
So Scott, I'm just going to be, I am in the point where I'm working day to day right now. And as Michael said, you know, and he was right to point out, like, they should be saying draft timelines all over in the... like, they should be saying draft timelines all over and influence the authority. I am trying not to make estimates for things that I don't know, that I'm not required to do as a superintendent and following what I'm told by AOE. It's not that I, I won't do it, it's just that in the amount of work that has to be done. At the same time, I would let you know that not only are we creating budgets, but we have to input, like, two new software platforms for fiscal soft. One new platform for fiscal software as long as, as well as keep our old one going for next fiscal year, and that has to be operational by July 1, and a whole new accounting coding system that Laurie's done once and has to redo because the code, coding system was not solid in the state of Vermont. They changed it. So this is a three-level whammy on the fiscal department. And I was accused of and guilty of, I'm protecting our fiscal department. So I don't ask them to do anything they don't have to do right now.
Is all this doable, Stephen?
It's not really a question of whether it's doable. We have to do it. Required. If I have to move resources, if I have to move resources, I will do it. And that's just where we're at. So I, I, if, if, that's why I'm not trying to think about what ifs.
So I think our budget discussion is done unless something happens.
That's what I was going to say later on, is that I'm not planning on any more budgets.
Should we not, you know, take some kind of formal action to say we recommend?
I don't know. That's what I just asked.
It's up to you if you'd like to.
I'd like to, yeah.
It's not coming from Bill. It's coming from Vermont.
Yep. So does someone want to make a motion? Do you want to do that?
It's not really an action so much as, but I guess we could say that we recommend this draft budget for the consideration of the.
The transition.
Transition.
To, to support the education at U 32 or something. Is there a second to that? Did you get that, Lisa? You want to read it back?
To support the education of.
I don't know, to, to. Read what you got so far.
That the U 32 board recommends this draft budget for the consideration of the transition board.
Yeah, just leave it at that. So Carl, second. Discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries.
I'm sorry. I forgot to give you a piece of paper that I should have given you because it's, because I, I've already seen you once in December.
It's true.
Have this piece of paper then, but I do now. And I just want you to have it so you see it. Some of you have seen it already, but it's a dashboard that we're using for looking at all budgets across the S U and the cost requests. Will I give you this with tax rate?
I think you, is it the, is it the green and yellow?
No. It's this.
I don't know.
So let me hand it out. It's just because this is the second meeting and I, I'm sorry if I forgot to do this. I gave you the green, I gave you the green and yellow.
Yes, you did give us the green and yellow.
And I think this, because this came out literally the Monday of Berlin's meeting. So we're a little ways from that.
I saw this in.
Yeah, you've seen it. So this is. So what this is, is it get the top table? Yes, thank you. Took a couple for. The top table is our figures from this current budget year for each school. I'm going to go through this quickly because I think all of you know this, but stop me if I'm going too fast. Just gives you the expense budget, the offsetting revenues, which then gets you to local education spending, which is the numerator in the tax rate formula. The denominator is the equalized pupils. So you can see for U 32 right now, for this current fiscal year, it's 733. For, then you see the co, the local ed spending per equalized pupil, which sets the tax rate. So you can see the variability across the, the district. And one of the things, I'm going to preempt a couple of questions because I've been now through this form with a couple of boards. I'm not advocating for the same spending at all places because I think we should do it by student need. One of the works that I've been doing in my doctoral research is that the first thing a superintendent should really look at is keeping the priority of student learning at the top. The second is that put resources where the needs are not necessarily equal across the system. And then it shows you some grants down below from consolidated federal programs and Medicaid revenues, and then how much of that would be in, how much in addition would that be for equalized pupils? Why did this conversation really start when we started thinking about Berlin? Berlin has a little over two, 2.5 FTEs that they get in support through federal money, so it's hard to really see some of the staffing that's in the local budget because it's outside the local budget. So then, this is all draft one, you're draft three. But we will, we have to keep this equal across. As soon as I finish with Calis tomorrow night, we'll republish this for all the budgets. But you can see the spend, the same thing, the spending. I'm going to jump down to some of the highlights. U 32 is down almost 10 equalized pupils this year. Your spending per equalized pupil is up about $800, $900. You're above, you're below the threshold by $211,000 to get into the excess spending penalty. You'll see that three of your, three of our schools are there. They're, those are in red. That's, well, usually that means below in most fiscal worlds, but it's above the threshold by that amount. Now, I know that DODI and I know Calis tomorrow night, because the budget they're getting, will bring them back into below the threshold. DODI just below, Calis will come down quite a bit if the board adopts what's recommended by Cat and myself. You'll see the penalty amount that those towns will have to raise in addition to. And then you'll see the tax rate based on taxes, based on the CLA from last year. So if we were to build the taxes based on individual districts, the town tax rates would be this. The next line is what's the education, the merged equalized tax rate for the whole district? So it's $1.79. And then taking last year's CLA, we'll change this once we get this year's CLA at the end of the month. What would be the tax rate with a merge system? And then you see the differentials. If it's in black, it's an increased cost. If it's in red, it's a decreased cost per hundred of assessed value. So that's just to give you some tax information. Usually by now, I'm giving you tax information. Things that have been really tough is that we're not, we're, the only figure we receive so far is what the dollar yield is from the state government. Every other number, we usually get a lot more numbers now by December 15th than we just haven't been getting from the state government. And that's due to their.
They're doing the same thing.
They just don't have the, they don't, they're running behind. They don't have the personnel power to pull off what they need to pull off by statute. So. So that's a quick overview on tax rates.
Did, is the loss of a small school grant factored into?
It is under Calis and, and DODI, and that's really what put DODI into the penalty, was the loss of small schools grant. They had been planning for that. They shifted some, they shifted money out of what they were putting into capital reserve for building, for the, taking care of the building. And that was a plan they had made three years ago. They had planned on it. They said, let's, they had a good, they had a year where their CLA was really positive, so they needed to lower their tax rate. They increased their amount to have, to build up their capital fund, but knowing that if they lost their small, small schools grant, that's where they would go to stand to the threshold. Calis, Calis has a double whammy. They lost only about 29, 25, 29, I could be off, somewhere in the 20,000 area, 20, $30,000 area in their small schools grant, but they're losing $53,000 or their literacy interventionist that's paid for with federal grants. And if they're no longer have, their poverty has gotten lower, below the threshold that allows them to receive school-wide support for federal grants. So they lose that 50,000, $53,000 and they put that position into the budget. They're going with budget redu, with reductions, riffs tomorrow night in classroom teachers. The population at Calis will be down below 90 students in K through six next year at Calis. We're at 96, 98 right now. Calis is really, the projections for Calis and the projections for middlesex are lowering students. But we're losing students and, and quite rapidly. I mean, we're looking at middlesex, Rumney, two years ago, 165 students pre-K through six, and we're looking to be in the 127 to 130 area in two years. And so, and Stephen gave you those numbers earlier. He showed you what kindergarten right now is 77 and you're graduating 123. That's coming.
Right. I refer to a 1% decrease over time. This, where it says we're down 28, 27.94, and that's actually a 2% decrease in one year. So that drip, drip, drip is getting.
Louder.
Louder.
Louder and faster. Is Rumney trying to get below that threshold spending?
They, they gave us, when we asked for priorities from them the other night, their first priority was to reduce their transfer to their capital fund, another 30,000. Their second priority was to find anything we could in the budget, which I thought was $10,000 or $15,000. And then they said, the rest of it, don't make personnel cuts and come to us with, go above the threshold we're spending. Is the direction the board gave us. So there'll be, if, with that, in my estimate, we haven't done the work yet, but my estimate is that's about 60,000 to 65,000.
So they'll still be above it?
Yeah.
And is that because they're losing people so fast?
No.
The penalty is a dollar.
It's how the building is staffed.
The penalty is a dollar per dollar?
Yeah, for every dollar you have to raise, that you need above the threshold. So if there's 50,000, you've got to raise 100, and 50 of that goes into the ed fund and 50 of it goes to what you have over. Because this is a state, I mean, this is a statewide funding system. And so, I mean, there isn't a town in this district that raises enough education tax dollars to pay for the expenses that are being authorized by boards. So, you know, when you look at all the, Berlin is the closest where about 95%. If you took a ratio of the education dollars raised in Berlin to the expense, it's about 95%.
So we're all net benefactors.
You're net benefactors.
Get from the system.
Oh, yeah, I mean, all the, the money goes to the state. You have the authority to set what the spending is, and then the state gives us the money to do it.
That's a great piece of paper. Thank you.
I, I know people are going to be asking for this because this is something I anticipate, and I'm not doing it to get things equalized, but I think if you don't know the numbers, when you, one of the first things about equity, you know, we know about equity, I'm going to go to that sidebar, is you have to know what the numbers and the differences are. And so whether we're talking about racial equity or funding equity, we have to say, so what are the numbers? It doesn't mean they need to be the same, but you have to know what they are. And then you can have the conversation. You know, someone, one board member assumed that, hey, they should be equal across. I said, well, I wouldn't assume that. I actually think the transition board should have that discussion. Shouldn't be the same.
That was that slide that you showed with the different height students.
Yeah.
Getting the apple.
Well, well, you also, when you think about equalized pupil too, is that it does cost more to educate a high school student than it does.
Yeah, an elementary student.
And the formulas look at that when they put it together. So if we go to an equalized, if, if we had the same amount across, that would mean that, you know, a second, third grade student would have the same level of funding as a ninth, 13th grade.
And that's been shown within Vermont across the nation, that that, it's higher cost of the high school.
And I can say that in the system that I was in, where we were more like the merge system, we, we had a multiplier for high school students that was slightly larger than the elementary school.
Questions? Thank you. Act 46 update, excuse me. Transition board membership. So we get to elect two members to the transition board.
Pause you on that statement?
Yes.
You have the choice to elect different members. If you do not do it, the clerk and the chair are automatically part of it. But you have the choice to reaffirm that, to, to change it if you would like. And that was made at the last November 28th board meeting.
Does anybody have a strong opinion? I am happy to do it. I had assumed all along I was going to.
We're talking three meetings, so. Well, I do just want.
Good try, Carl.
Sorry, Carl, but it's probably, you know, best, especially in January from the 14th, there'll be, you know, I'm, as Michael's right to say, I'm making some assumptions, but I'm going to keep making them. That the 14th and the 16th of January would be meeting dates. We'll need a meeting the next week. And then probably we'll want three meetings to talk about budget. So it means the last meeting in January and two in February. But that, I just want, I just want, that's transparent is what I forecast. I can't forecast everything.
And you're also doing negotiations, so are you?
Right, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm glued to negotiations through the process. I do not anticipate putting my hat in the ring come July for, you know, for, for the, for the new permanent board. So I'm willing to, I'm willing to.
Is there anybody else chomping at the bit to do it?
Unless anybody's chomping at the bit to do it.
Chomping at the bit, are you kidding?
You know, you never know. So let's just do.
I would move that we appoint Adrian and Carl to the transition board.
The second?
Second.
Scott, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're all set on that. Town report contents. I'm going to pass that one off to you.
Yep, I figured you were. I figured you were. So every, and I just do it for kind of illustration. And you don't need to be able to read this. All you need to do is see if there are circles on this paper. And there are not very many of them. This is a list of everything that goes into the U 32 annual report. As you'll see, if, you can't see it, but if you wanted to read it, you could. About two-thirds to three-quarters is budget information and tax information for the next budget year. Since we're not there, I made a decision, and you can influence my decision, but I made it the other day, probably last week, that we would report in this year's reports, in the town, in the school portion of the town report, we'll report on this current year and the last fiscal year. But we won't report on the next year because we don't have the budget and some of, I think what Michael's talking about is very appropriate. We don't have the authority. One of the things the transition board has to talk about is how are annual reports sent out to the electorate?
So how next year's budget.
Yeah, and then we have to put together next year's budget and all that. So that's, when you see this whole list and you've got, there isn't one report in our system that's the same. That's why when I said trying to stop, like, we're past it because we just can't make up the time in doing town reports now at this point. Because usually we're already making things for that January date right now. So that piece, I wanted to, to let you know that. To let you know that we're trying to put together a way, we're going, we're actually in publication right now. I know Stephen has his part. He's working on, probably over break, of the part of the town report, the principal report, the board chair report, my report will be in there. I think a lot of my report will be about Act 46. You know, that talks about what's, what's happening currently in U 32. And then we're producing an academic report. We're still waiting for the state report card to finish this month because there's an online reporting. It's supposed to take away all the school reports that were done by individual schools. So once we have that, we're actually going to use that data and put it in to do a school report like we usually do that comes out before town meeting day, celebrating the great successes and areas we've been working on. I just don't have a data publication for you on that.
So you are putting out an annual report?
We have to put, we have to do one.
And it will be before town meeting or not?
I just don't know right now, Adrian.
And do you want a board chair report in that?
I want a board chair report for the, for the town reports.
Okay.
We can help you with it as we have another year.
Yeah. Sometimes I wrote them myself and sometimes I got help.
Yeah.
And that probably needs to be done by January, 23rd or something.
I'll check a list. Oh, Krista, she and I, we, we've been saying for like a week, we've got to resit down and check calendars.
That, it's something like, it's January 20-something.
I'm sure it's somewhere in her book, somewhere that we have to have this conversation on that item.
Okay.
I'm trusting that it is.
Other questions? Discussion? Thank you for doing that. That's a lot. Discussion? Thank you for doing that. That's a lot.
Well, right now, we're building a big project plan. That's the work to be done over Christmas break. That has, because a lot of these have dependencies, so you do this thing usually here, but now you don't. So what's that do to other processes during the year that we've had this kind of, we didn't have to have it. And we had checklist, but we didn't really need them. Now it's, it's not dropping anymore.
So future meeting schedule and content?
So I wanted to ask this of you. This is an item that I put on, Adrian, that you know. I just wanted to say, you usually meet the first Wednesday every month. I'm going to kind of blend three, four, and three, five here. You know, you've got board meetings on, we need you to be operational. You're the oper, you have the operational authority through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. So this board is, has the responsibility and authority for U thirty-two for the operations till then. That means that, you know, what does that mean? What's the minimum you have to do? And I'm not saying you can't do more, I just want you to know what the minimum. We need you to approve board orders, and if there's a student or staff hearing. I thought it'd be good for you guys, for all of you to have a discussion about, what does that mean for what we want to accomplish here as a board? We'll need you to, we need, we need to have, right now, there are only three of you that are going on as board members, because four of you are up for election this March. This board needs to be seated through December two thousand nineteen, because after June thirtieth, one of the things we need this board to do is to approve the audit. If it goes, if the audit's not delivered by then, the way the draft articles read, is that authority then will go to the new board. But we, we know we'll have the audits done, and our honor, our idea is that there's a timeline to get this done. Who's up for reelection?
I am. I don't think it's four of us.
I thought it.
I think we did see that it was, because you're on, right?
That's what I'm asking.
I think Jonathan is, because you said you've got Veronica.
I thought we, we...
I definitely am up.
So Cory's up.
Cory's up.
George, you're up.
Hello?
Adrian's up.
Time flies.
You filled, you filled a, a point, you were appointed in two thousand sixteen, so that...
I don't think so. I, I think I ran again. I was actually on the ballot.
What, was it two?
Last year.
Yeah, was it one year left of a term?
I don't believe so. I think I finished out the term.
So can you check with Rosemary?
Sure.
Yeah.
It'd be great if you're not up for it.
For this board?
Yeah, that's my current plan.
And I'm, I will definitely run for this board to see it through.
Did you say you were going to run to stay on this board?
We're anticipating moving, and I just don't know my timeline, but I think that I can sort of out, at least in July, I mean, I guess like that would be my caveat. Would, if I moved this summer, would that, would that not be beneficial?
Well, if we, all we need is a quorum.
All you need is four.
To approve that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need four.
It's the audit.
So that makes sense to folks if I...
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, so we need to keep...
So that's a piece that I wanted to, to talk to you all about. And just, you know, we're still, I'm still planning on first of the, first Wednesdays of the month meetings for this board. I may or may not be at meetings to come. This may be one of my last meetings with you, just because I've got to start making decisions about work that I've got to do.
I'll be here with you.
Steven will be.
Yay!
To the bitter end, I'm with you guys.
So we're, we, I feel like a lame duck. Would it be an operational challenge if we didn't meet in January?
Since that's two school days from now, basically.
So operationally?
No.
I mean, no.
No, we had, you, you have a motion that puts in place for covering of board orders. That's not a big deal. So that's why I was trying to tell you, the minimum for operation are the things I just told you. I'm not trying to stop you from doing things, I'm just trying to tell you what you have, what we need you to do as a board for an operational board.
I just say that because there's a lot going on in January, and personally, I'm going to a lot of different school board things.
Yeah. Well, and it doesn't sound like, we literally have Thursday and Friday, and then we come back to school. That would be our meeting on Wednesday. So that, unless there's something we have to do that meeting.
We will do our best to make sure that you don't need hearings, and...
And we'll just wait for the hearing that, until we meet.
That's your choice to make.
Yeah.
Your choice to make.
So, does that seem reasonable, folks, we take January off?
Yes, please. So that, it would be, was it supposed to be?
January second.
January second.
Yes, there'd be zero...
Well, there's tomorrow and Friday.
Yes. And that's a school day, too. That's a school day, too.
That day, yeah, yes. Trouble could happen that day, you're right.
That's a school day.
I'm not worried about it.
So your, your next, if you didn't do that, your next meeting would be February sixth. And then there's a carousel that month, but I think because you didn't meet on January, it would probably be good for you to meet. There would be, there's a carousel planned for the twentieth.
And I sort of feel like, if we don't meet, I mean, we're kind of in a void right now. There won't be any board overseeing U thirty-two.
I disagree with that.
Well, there'll be a transitional board, but...
But they don't have oversight. They didn't, the transitional board only has three powers.
Right.
They can call for, they can call for two different types of election, which are two of the powers. One, if they, if an Articles of Agreement Committee produces a set of articles, they must warrant for an election to approve those. And the second one is to determine a method, as Michael was saying, for how we will have candidates run for the new board.
Well, that's what I mean...
The third is to recommend a budget to the new board.
So they're not concerned generally with U thirty-two?
Right, they're not doing the operational.
Yeah, right.
And that's why I was very careful to say, you have operational authority to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
And I, I think we should carry on until there's another board that is going to kind of take over the vision and all of U thirty-two.
Exactly.
Are people in agreement with that? Sorry, Stephen, we're not going to let you loose.
Should I plan for a legislature?
You can help with that, sorry.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, in February?
That would be that February one.
February sixth, the legislature, legislators come?
Sure.
I, I would think people have to think of somebody to say to their legislators.
Yeah.
Is that John May for you guys?
I'm going to ask for Adrian and some support from you as a board to put it together, because the person that I have doing most of the work...
Well, if you give me the email...
I'll get you, I'll get you two.
Yeah, I can do that.
She's a little swamped right now.
Krista, is that Krista?
And I'm happy to help.
You know...
Yeah, it really, it's just an email.
I would just offer to, that Leslie can help support this board as we close out the work that's here, where, where we did move a lot of things over to Krista, but in the, the amount of work, Leslie is very capable, she knows how to do this.
She's incredible.
She could write it to Leslie.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So, I mean...
Because there's coordination of the whole, there's a little, there's internal coordination that has to be done.
Yeah, that's a really nice offer.
Well, I mean, it's, it's okay, yeah.
Well, she did that very capably for very many years.
Correct, correct. I mean, it was just in some of the restructuring, but she can, but in this time, I mean, we're, we're all, we're all doing some things we never thought we'd be doing, so.
Okay, so legislators.
Yeah.
And I think we start them at six-thirty or seven, I can't...
They like to start either six-thirty or seven, because they usually have caucuses on Wednesday.
Yeah, so we can do our, we can meet at six and they come in at seven. Okay, so I'll let you guys figure out the timing of that, let Leslie do that.
Before we move on, can I just go back to the Articles Committee?
Yeah.
Just wanted to update folks, I'm, I sit on this Articles of Agreement Committee that's going to morph into the seven oh six B committee that will be recommending the new Articles Association. And it's not clear to me that we're going to be able to complete our work, actually, as of this morning. We spent a few hours, and we're really wrestling with, I think we have a few options. One is to just present the default, which, in fact, there'd be no reason to, to vote on those, because those are the default. We can do a default with certain amendments. But, but the way we present those amendments is very complicated, or could be very complicated, depending on what we want to take on. And so we are, we're wrestling with how, what we present and how we present it. And we're just a group of six people currently, we're about to be a group of eleven, and it could get even more complex. And, and there's been new issues raised just in the last twenty-four hours. So I just wanted to share with you that while I thought things were moving along and we would be able to wrap up our work, it's not clear to me that we will.
And we have to have a public hearing on January ninth?
Well, that's the date I said. It doesn't have to be that. I'm just trying to, I'm literally, like, have a big calendar going in my office right now that I went back to paper, which was hard to do for me. And, because it's just a chessboard. I mean, it really is. You move one thing here, and it's like, and I'm cascaded all the way out to June, and it's, you know, things just move, they shift.
Talk, talk about assumptions. We don't even know the Berlin membership of the new seven oh six B. They haven't met, they haven't, we have no idea who they're going to appoint. So in terms of scheduling meetings with that committee and then the hearing that needs to follow, it's kind of a leap of faith at this point.
And do they have to appoint someone?
Yes, they need, they need to appoint at least one board member, two community members. And we can't, we're having a hard time scheduling a meeting for the Berlin board right now.
Stay tuned.
Okay, thanks. So future meeting schedule and content?
Yeah, you did, you did, you did. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to get all that out. I just, I'm trying to be as transparent.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
And I hope you, I'll take any private feedback about my video or praise in, on the camera. But I'm trying to do those videos like every week. I already know three things I'm going to say at the end of this week, which might be just filmed with my phone, hey, folks, here are three new things I know about Act forty-six and the merger process. And just put them up there.
Communication is greatly appreciated.
It's just, just, it's, and it, it's frankly, the video is the fastest and easiest way for me to do it. And people are getting more and more lenient with what they, you know, how formal a video needs to be.
Just Bill talking.
You can't compete with PewDiePie, I understand.
I don't want to, I don't want to go there.
I'd rather watch PewDiePie.
Okay, reports to the board. Central Vermont Career Center, excuse me.
You heard my little bit. They came down some on their tuition, yay.
Do you think that was because of pressure from you guys?
I would like to think so. So not much else to report from them.
Student reps are otherwise occupied this evening?
Yes, they are.
Would you let them know we're not meeting in January?
I will fill them in.
Okay, I wouldn't want them to show up. Administration report.
You've got a lot of it.
Schools, schools still running, no matter what.
I actually would say things are running really well.
Yeah, actually, we are doing really well. I mean, I, I, I think that...
Unless, unless you, unless, I said to Stephen jokingly yesterday, I said, stop, don't protect me even though I'm overwhelmed right now. And I want to know something's going on, but I don't, I see good things every time I'm over here.
Yeah, we're, you know, the, the work that we're doing around, so I, I think this would encapsulate a lot of it. So one, one of the conversations that we've had recently is that, you know, as our sophomore, or our juniors are moving through this year, they, we're starting to see, okay, where are there places within the curriculum that they have not had an opportunity to demonstrate the proficiencies that we find are important? So all those standards that we adopted, the work that we did around them, a very good example, and we've, we've brought this to attention before, is engineering and science. Another one is economics within global citizenship, statistics within math. And the conversation that we're, we're having around those are, so we want to provide as many opportunities as we can. We realize that those opportunities may not be as robust as we would want. But what we really see is that this is an important part of our curriculum that wasn't there, right? And so because we have now created these proficiencies and said that these are important, we can really identify where were we not serving our students as well as we should. And so, so those discussions are now happening, is to, how does this, how do we get this? How do we make sure that kids have this? And it's not just simply one department saying, oh, my God, what do we do? Like, this has been a discussion across departments. Department heads are like, well, what about this, or what about this? Or, you know, how can we start to create new opportunities for, for some of these proficiencies to be done in multiple classrooms? And, and you're starting to see evidence of it. And we have a climate change unit that's going on in the ninth grade team that the social studies teachers and the science teachers are pretty much running the project between the two classes, so that there are the policy implications, the government implications, all of those, while the science teachers are working on the, the scientific facts, the, the reports that are put out. And, and so they're really starting to, to come together to make sure that those proficiencies are done. And so it's, it's, the work is there, you know? And, and those conversations are no longer so isolated as one department is responsible for this. You know, reading is starting to be talked about school-wide, our math goals. You know, the science teachers are saying, well, what does this mean for us? Like, how do we make sure that the kids are doing it? And so, and we put a lot of work into putting proficiencies in the student learning outcomes and the work that you guys did to it. And it's filtering down now, you know, to those lower, to the classroom level, where, where you want to see it happening. And so it's, it's been nice. It's, it, it's, it's kind of a wake-up call. I, I will say, one of the teachers the other day said, you know, I feel really responsible for making sure that every kid meets this. And we would hate to think that in the past, that, that there were kids that we let slip by, but there were kids who got Ds, right? And we were okay with that at one point in time, and we're not okay with it anymore. We really are not okay with it. And, and so that's a great level of rigor that, that we've all hoped for, and hopefully address some of those issues that were brought up in the middle part of the presentation. You know, preparing people so that they, you know, what I saw in that was that it was no high school or only high school education is, is the part that scared, scares me. And if we prepare kids to be successful beyond high school, then we've done them a great service. So I, I think our teachers are really focused on that right now.
Curious what the, what's the engagement like around the math proficiency goal? And is there discussion of a literacy goal yet?
So I would, I would say that we were probably talking more about the literacy one prior to the math one, but we, we hadn't really set a full goal. I actually, I cheat, I, just my stuff that I look at while you guys are debating things. But it was some of the work that's being done with our students. These are the students that are in our Read One Eighty program, and this is their recent growth reports, you know, that we, we get from that. You know, we, we want to see the same kind of performance out of literacy, and we really are closing the gap. One of the biggest numbers that I saw today was a hundred-point gain on the Lexile score. It's a little more than a grade level by the time you get to eighth to ninth grade. And our ninth graders in the Read One Eighty program had a ninety-seven point gain in half a year.
All right.
And then our eighth graders had a forty-seven point average gain. And our seventh graders only had a seventeen point average gain, but in a half a year. A lot of that can be attributed, they just got here. And so, but we see the program, like, it, it, just looking at the averages, it accelerates pretty well for our kids. And we're starting to see a lot more kids, our graph used to have a lot more red in it that was bad, but there's a lot more green. And, and so it's starting to, we're starting to see good results from our kids. And the work that we're focused on, making sure that they can read and read well, so.
Yeah, we're just collecting the winner of benchmark across the issue we were working on that Tuesday, the leadership.
Yeah.
Avoiding, you know, where our benchmarks tell us about that. Morning, huh?
Good.
Yeah?
Good. Finance. Do we need?
No, nothing to report.
Executive Committee? I don't think you've met, right?
Nothing to report.
Policy Committee hasn't met. School Quality hasn't met. Negotiations?
I don't think we've met since we met.
Okay.
We don't need to get until after the holidays.
So we need a motion to approve the Monuski Valley statewide choice agreement for two thousand nineteen, twenty. And I assume it's the same agreement we...
We used the same agreement before, which is...
Ten kids in and out?
Ten, ten kids in and out for a year.
And we always get ten coming in?
Oh, absolutely, the list is long.
Yeah. So is there a motion to accept that agreement?
Don't move.
Carl, in a second.
A second.
Scott, any discussion about that? That won't change with Act forty-six, will it?
Don't ask that question.
Okay, never mind. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Well, we may actually, there was a debate Monday at Superintendent's meeting.
Okay.
I said I'm doing it with the board that's sitting in control of the high school right now. That was my decision. I'll take the lumps either way.
A motion to accept the audit report that we received via email.
I'll move that.
Kari, in a second.
I'll second.
Karen, do people have questions or comments about it?
Did I see an email from you at some point?
It's a daunting document. There's a lot there.
That was, that was a separate thing. Kari had sent me a bunch of stuff.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, which I was very grateful for, especially now knowing how much she's got on her plate.
I'd actually told her not to do it. She said, I'll get to it when I do.
Well.
Not because of you, Scott. It was just-
I know, I-
I have to select projects.
No, I, I understand, but I greatly appreciate it if it-
A couple of questions.
Yeah.
One is, at the, at the very end, they go to great lengths to tell us that they evaluate internal controls, but not in order to render an opinion about the effectiveness of those internal controls. It's classic auditor language by Tom.
And you got a lot of, what they do may tell us, and some of it they tell us that doesn't get in that report. There were some suggestions that were put in place. If you ask me what they are, and I, I don't even remember because we did-
My, but my question is, how common is it to actually have an audit evaluate the effectiveness of internal controls for schools? It's not something that happens very often.
Well, the feds actually do pretty tightly on us. And they, we're actually, when we move into a merge system, our audit practice is going to have to change because we're going to be more than one system with a greater, we go above the threshold in federal money we use in one merge system, so the audit's going to have to change a little bit because the federal, we have to report directly to the feds through our auditor for those internal controls that you're talking about.
So, so perhaps I'll provide more comment on it?
Or just more accountees?
I think it's going to be more accountees for the Office of, for OMB at the federal level.
Well, so that actually is my second question, just to confirm that when we're a unified district, if and when we're unified, we'll save money on the audit. Be more efficient to produce one document rather than six.
I would like to hope so. I don't know. I haven't really answered that question. Laura's told me yes, it'll be less. And she's told me that since like three or four years ago.
We won't know for sure until we-
But I haven't gotten asked for a price quote.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor of accepting the audits, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So a year from now, we're going to be doing that as the final thing.
Yeah, well, you'll do the thing. She'll do that and dissolve the board.
It'll be a really quick meeting. A motion to approve the School Quality Committee recommendation for this SU-wide goal related to student learning, related to literacy, right? To set literacy goals.
No, I think this is the whole thing that they had said, that they said in the SU meeting. This is, remember, if you remember the conversation at the supervisory meeting?
I do.
Yeah, or three.
Should we all just affirm?
Oh, okay, that's right. It wasn't just-
I'll adopt the math, ask for a comparable literacy.
Yeah, okay, thank you for the, the bigger picture.
A little blurry right now, man.
There was one more. Yeah. It's okay. Nope, okay. So is there a motion to approve the, and it's kind of interesting because it's already our goal. Right, haven't we adopted goals that have this? You know, not, we have a student learning goal.
Yeah.
So we can change our U32 goal to match this goal.
So the third part was a call for some formal review of how it went.
Reflection of the teachers.
Oh, that's right, that's right, yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did we, I didn't get, I didn't get a motion? I am sorry, a motion. Thank you, Lisa.
Some of it.
And a second?
Second.
George, more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Appoint a representative to the Articles of Agreement Committee.
So can I talk about this before?
Yes, you certainly may.
So there are two different groups. There's the Articles Agreement Committee and that Kari's been part of, that has representation from all six boards. And I said in the SU meeting, I thought that there, we can do it with, that we can keep that small group that had been working well. And I, because of the way 46 language is structured. After conferring with Chris Leopold, our attorney, you received an email from me last week that says that the towns need to appoint people to the Act 49. That's not what this is. This is the group that Kari's been part of. And Matthew suggested that everyone reaffirm that he's on it. I also know, and I hope you've heard already, I just haven't had a chance to tell you, Kari, that Monday night, Eastmont Pilear appointed you to be part of this membership for them through 706. Because they said, Kari should, he's an Eastmont Pilear resident, he should help us. He's been working on it. And I was supposed to get you and I didn't, so I apologize. I said that come Monday night, I'll tell her.
So U32 doesn't need to do anything?
They need to, just to point you to this current Articles, the, the one we have going that you sat on today.
Sort of semi-
And then when we set, it's almost done. We set one more meeting.
Didn't we do that last, I thought we did that.
Did you do that?
Because we were in a carousel.
Right, did you come in here and do that?
Yeah.
I think we formally did.
Yeah, we, I, I thought-
Yes, we did both of them.
So then you're, so then you're done. That one is not needed. I'm sorry. There, I, I remember walking after the carousel meeting, where they had Chris and I said, put all these things on all the agendas.
We did it. We approved the membership.
But because we met after the carousel meeting, we were able to do that.
But just so you know, the towns are appointing their membership and it needs to be proportional. Because when you read the final language in Act 49, it says in the same manner and method.
So which towns have already done that?
All but Berlin and Callis. Callis will do it tomorrow night and Berlin is the one we're trying to get finished.
And so who did, what, can you tell us?
Matthew is on for Worcester. And tonight, Remy was going, no, they put, for the Articles, it's Chris and Brian. And for Eastmont Pilear, it's Flor and Darcy and Carl.
Maybe that was in the paper this morning.
I read that.
That was in the paper this morning, yeah.
And then Callis is meeting tomorrow night. They need two folks.
Okay. So you're going to be one of them?
I, I don't know. I, I think they have to have one board member and Dorothy's been part of it. What we're trying to do is keep the people that were on this committee to, because they have knowledge of how it's pulled together.
Okay, I just wanted to know. And then we don't need, oh, we appointed members to the transition board already. So we need a motion to, do you want to tell us the motion for this?
So, so just a quick piece so that you understand what we're, what we're saying is that at the last meeting, you approved the pre-qualification criteria for companies to do the track project. So we put out these pre-qualifications. Yesterday, those were due and Bill Ford, John, John Himmelgarn, David Hannigan, our Building and Grounds Director, Kevin Warden, who's from Engineering Ventures, and myself met to review those. Of the companies that, that gave us a, all the information to address the, the pre-qualifications. We, we recommend that you pre-approve five companies to do the project. And we think that's a good cross-section. So those five companies, if you want to see the full piece of this in the board Google Drive, and I think you guys, do they have access to it?
No, they cannot have access to it as a board. Boards cannot share things through Google.
That sounds exactly right.
Go complain to the website. The Senate stopped it last time we tried to get it through.
If you have questions about these, I can answer, but we have five companies who will recognize, yeah, here are the names. Capital Earth Moving, Jay Hutchins, I'll give, and I'll get all these to you. DuBois Construction, EF Wall and Associates, and Engineers Construction, Inc. Those five companies met all the requirements. We did some reference checks on them. John Himmelgarn and Kevin Warden have worked with, with most of these companies extensively. And so these five companies are the ones we submit for pre-approval. And once you pre-approve these, just so you know, these five will have the option to bid on the track project. Whoever submits the lowest bid will win, unless they're within 1%, then we can choose.
How many submitted a bid or proposals?
Six companies submitted for pre-approval.
And did you judge that the sixth one didn't meet?
Didn't have the capacity to do this job.
Okay. So I'll move that we accept that recommendation.
I'll second.
Carl, is, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. A motion to approve the board orders?
Don't move.
Karen, a second?
Did you get the amount, Lisa?
No.
I'll give it to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I sent them back. Were there any questions on them? Did we get a second here?
I'll second.
George?
In the amount of $65,542.73.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Future agenda items for February, we've got legislators.
Yes.
That's good. Go from there. Board communication? I think we're good for a while.
I think so.
Yeah. Yep. So we need to move in- We need to move back into executive session to address that.
I'll move that we move back into the-
Executive session.
So Kari and Carl? And Carl, if you just give Lisa those initial notes from the beginning, she can, then you don't have to give them. And you might want to, let's just take a five-minute break.